It is six thirty. We will be heading into the morning with our regular council meeting of May tenth, twenty eighteen. If everyone would please stand while we do some verification of questions to apply. I was praying. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all that you've done for us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here together to make decisions on behalf of our community that we all can provide input and discuss the best things for East Ridge. And we just pray that you can give us wisdom and guidance, show us the way we should go in all things. These things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Friend of the propeller.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put in the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Bearstow.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. City manager, your.
Here.
City attorney.
Here. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the consent agenda. Be the equal twenty-sixth agenda work session minutes and the equal twenty-sixth regular council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion. I have a motion to approve, but I'd also like to add to the minutes that the I B D O gave the three hundred pair of safety gloves for the E R P D. For medical units.
Which set of minutes would that have been?
Regular.
Regular. Okay, so we have a motion to approve as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We can have the roll call, please.
Ms. Bearstow.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes. Mayor Lambert.
Stay. I was not here. All right, at this time, we entertain communication from citizens. If you're a resident of the city of East Ridge or business owner here in town, you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this is the opportunity to do so. Come to one of the microphones at the front, state your name and address for the record. We'll have five minutes. We have three votes to be signed in. Is Coach James still here?
He left.
He left, okay. He, I guess he said what he needed to say during the, the agenda work session, so. And that is.
Actually.
Speaking of Coach James, that is something that he had asked for during the agenda work session. Is for us to, is for the council to waive the fee for use of the East Ridge High School football field. On June eighth, there will be a, a benefit football game. It's the Tennessee Georgia All-Star Game. It's an annual thing, but this year, considering the passing of Mr. Barton today, that game will be a benefit for Mr. Barton's family, considering the, his extended stay in the, in the hospital and the expense that goes along with that. So that will be added to our agenda tonight. We can add it as item E under new business. But we could, we could actually, if we want to end with a budget presentation, we can slide E ahead of B. And have that done. Okay, the next person, John Burns, is that right?
Yes.
Sixteen oh nine Berry Road.
I've been trying to get somebody to read there with the street in front of my house for four years. And I haven't been able to get anybody to do anything. They seem to listen, but they don't do anything. When she was running for election, I begged her to have something done to my road, my street there in front of my house. Nobody had done anything. I talked to you, whom we had to meet, no here. Nobody's done anything. So what am I supposed to do? Keep on paying taxes when y'all won't help me when I ask you to do something.
Well, you mentioned over at that meeting that you had an issue with the road. I don't know how many of you were at that meeting. It was a little bit chaotic and so I didn't get a full explanation of exactly what the issue is, other than there's an issue with the road. So if you, if you wouldn't mind telling us, what, what is the issue?
It's all broken up. There's roots there, they almost busted no pan. And I called them four years ago and told them I'd get tired of mowing the tree out, uh, in front of my house.
Okay, so it, it sounds like it needs to be patched. Is that what happened?
No, it, it needs to be repaved. And matter of fact, it need to be repaved all the way up to Clements. And the bushes and everything needs to be cut through there. It's going to, you can't hardly drive up through there without scratching your car.
Are the, are the bushes on someone's property? Are they on the right of way?
I mean, it's on, they're on the right of way.
Mr. Barnes, Berry Road, that little big street that goes between those houses right there off the Clements.
Yeah.
Folks, it looks like an alleyway, it don't even look like a road.
Well, it's, it's a road.
I understand that, I'm just trying to make them know how bad it is.
Yeah.
The fences are right out next to the road. The hedges are growing over the fences into the road. Big trees over here growing out into the road on the other side. People finding back out of the driveways at the end of that little road. The road barely is light enough for a car to come up through there. Two cars can't come up there. Five, a car might send them, can't come up through there.
Yep.
The road needs to be, we need to actually have it surveyed because the road where the property lines are according to fences stop by and provide it through there.
Well, if the.
It definitely needs to be.
If the shrubs, if the shrubs are actually growing from someone's yard out into the, out into the street, then code enforcement needs to.
There. When you try to get on Clements there and the shrub grows up over on the left-hand side. That lady is in a nursing home. She's not taking care of her property anymore. And her shrub grows up and you can't even see the inner of Clements Road. And I helped had a, a police officer stop and let me out because I couldn't see the inner of the road. You know, keep from getting hit. Instead of, I could go all the way around to Maxwell Road and come back up. But, you know, that's the thing, I do go that way because of the way it is. You know, the whole, whole part there from below my, my neighbor's, uh, and it's carried rocks and things up there and put in a hole, hole, on the road there. And it's just, it's not working out for me somehow or another. I don't know what to do about it.
Well, it sounds like two things. One, we'll have code enforcement pay a visit to, to those houses there that had the shrubs that are growing out of the road, which is certainly something that we could deal with through, through code enforcement. And then the other thing is to have the.
Street's apartment.
Go out and look at the actual road and see what, what would be the, the best way to remedy that. If it's going to require a complete repave, is it, is it something that can, it could be patched? We'll, we'll let the, the experts decide which, which route's the best route there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm, well, I'm not for sure if our engine can get down through there in the right of time. We can come in off Maxwell and we can enter Berry Road. We can't come on Berry Road off Clements Road again. That's how narrow that could be.
It's always been that narrow?
Yes, sir, really.
All right, the next person on our list is Charles Pella, twelve fourteen, read it in.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to talk about something that's not in front of you today, but should be in the next month or so. The planning commission just approved a reason on Fountain Avenue from the R one, R three. And I'm sort of concerned given the area that it's in over, over west towards the clums. That it's, it's sort of going in the wrong direction for that area. I mean, y'all have all heard, everybody complains about that area all the time. And I think, I think to fix that, we need people living there long-term who have sort of buy-in or community. And I don't think more apartments are the way to go there. I don't think that's going to help. Looking at the G I S map, it looks, I could be wrong, but it looked, it looked to me like it was one of those split zone things. Where it was like a half R one, half R three thing. But, I mean, if it has to be reasonable one way or the other, why not just do R one for the whole thing? And have, like, put some long-term community units there instead of just having like packed-in transient people. They don't have like a, a long-term interest in improving that area. I think, I think the best thing we can do from that area is to have long-term residents there who are interested in improving throughout the town. Speaking of the way it is, it's still gone next year.
Mr. Custer. Come up, sir. I'm on the planning commission, I think I was looking against that. Isn't, isn't that a house that's in the middle of a much already apartment complex?
No, so that, that, most of the property is owned R three. There's a large, a large portion of it sunned R one. It's legally non-conforming use. The only reason why they're going back in front of the planning commission was because that front building has been under maintenance for the last few years. So they missed their one hundred and eighty-day window. They want to continue to maintain that property. It is an apartment complex already, it's existing. But for financial reasons, if, if it's not zoned accordingly, they can't re-add it, which would also mean that they can't develop the funds to remedy the situation or demolish it. The one that they're going to demo, which is the, the oldest building that they have, which was on the far right of the property, and looking at it, that's currently zoned R three already. So it is a split zone and it's just to clean up the zoning lines.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Well, thank you very much for that. And it, so it did pass, it's through the, the planning commission, so it will be coming to us.
Did the planning commission approve it or deny it?
Approved.
Approved it? So you don't come to this, when is it scheduled before the city council?
It'll be at six o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Six o'clock and the twenty-fourth, but the public hearing will be set for the first, second Thursday of June. I think that's the fourteenth. So that would be the public hearing. Give me an advance, mark that down. It'll be, if you're close by, you can, you can, three, four hundred feet, you can get it, if it's five hundred feet, you can get it really soon. If not, it'll be here on June fourteenth, then six thirty.
You're correct, it's, it is June fourteenth. That's the second person.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This time we will entertain communication from council members. Ms. Hilton, do you have any votes?
Yes. Now, once again, to the Martin County.
Absolutely. Mr. Custer, same here, just keep a little prayers. Also, a good friend and a family, basically a family member, he's one excellent paper, so we're pretty close. Mr. King.
Well, sorry, I'm, Mr. Barton. Really miss him. And I'd like to throw something out there about this Fountain Avenue. R three thing. R three, when we passed the short-term vacation minimum, we're going to have a lot of R three people coming up on the, because R three is eligible for short-term from R one, so they want to change from R one to R three, we'll get the chance to. And I'd like the planning commission to try and remember that because I hate to see. Spots on the kind of, just so they can open up short-term rental. I mean, the lady and I, one of the other night, they come up there and they, I was sitting there listening to it. That'd be a prime ideal place to want across that ridge, you're very talented now. They went down from, want to turn it to four, to three, just anything to get it zoned to R three. I'd like the planning commission to take into consideration that new short-term rental, like, for these R spots on one of these R ones, R threes.
All right. Thank you, sir. I just want to echo what everyone else has said in regard to Stump Barton. He's a wonderful person, very valuable employee for the city, and I know he'll be missed greatly. I do also want to mention, I think, well, I saw a press release that went out in regard to it. The outside lanes, I believe, down at Minute One are going to be closed for repaving. Was today and tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So expect traffic issues there.
Correct.
In that area. Do you have any information as far as an update on how the object is built?
This was supposed to be completed the first week in May. Although due to rain that we had coming in time after time after time. And we're now looking at a completion date for June fifteenth. But we need days, unfortunately, like today and tomorrow, where we narrow the lanes down to the inside and the outsides so we can get the resurfacing work done. That's the prime work that needs to get done.
You have a progress.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're playing with the road.
Yeah, I know they were. Hopefully, we don't have that many puddles out there that'll dry up until we can continue paving tomorrow. That's my fear. We have too many large puddles out there because of this rainstorm we had at five o'clock this afternoon. They may not be able to do it tomorrow. We do plan on working on Saturdays and Sundays, provided we don't have any major events going on at the arena. Because up this weekend, last weekend, we had the scenic soccer tournament bringing in two hundred and fifty teams. I said, you guys are working right away, which can't pave right Saturday and Sunday. I can't create a bottle that, that great. Or we get one anyway because the rain closed or something. Bear with us, they're, they're coming down the pipe to get this done. We just need a couple of weeks for the O R A, we can get all this resurfacing work done.
All right, thank you, sir. Chick-fil-A will open, they'll have a ribbon cutting a week from today, and it's Thursday, May seventeenth. I think the ribbon cutting's at nine AM. But they will open, I believe they'll open at six, six or six-thirty that morning. And then the ribbon cutting will be at nine o'clock. So that would be, be a very nice addition. I'm just trying to think of anything else that might be coming up here soon. Kent Offhand, is it a local or? Ah, yes, a local party, yes. Thank you. Down here, you have a Kent Jordan local party, which is a Mopar Dodge car ship. So everybody go out and see that if you're interested. Always something to do at Kent Jordan. Always something going on where, you know, but again, we. Oh, a good bit of that to, to Mr. Barton. Fill it up the calendar, but we've, for years and years, we've had excellent folks working down there to, to bring events and tournaments to, to Kent Jordan. We're very fortunate in that respect. All right, that's all that I have. Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
No, I think you, you covered those areas.
With that, we will move to old business. Item A is ordinance one zero seven zero on second and final reading.
An order to the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to reason the property located at one four two zero Boyd Street, tax map number one six nine G dash C dash zero three, and one four two two Boyd Street, tax map number one six nine G dash C dash zero four, from R one residential district to R T one residential townhouse district.
Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance one zero seven zero?
Throw the key seventy.
We have a motion, we have a second? Second. We have a second. Are there questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bearstow?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. Ordinance one zero seven zero is approved. Item B, ordinance one zero seven four, also on second and final reading.
An order to amend ordinance number nine two two relative to article six, section one one five point two, rules and regulations of municipal code. Zoning ordinance applied from section one five five point three, minimum hotel and extended stay hotel requirements and standards from section one one five point four, minimum motel requirements. And by adding an additional section one one five point five, penalty for failure to comply with hotel, extended stay hotel, or motel regulations.
What's the ordinance number you read?
Nine two two?
That ordinance one zero seven four.
It's amending, it's amending ordinance nine two two.
Approved ordinance ten seven four?
Yes. Amends nine.
Motion to approve ordinance ten seven four?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one zero seven four. Are there any questions?
Nothing changed, it's just penalties.
Uh, penalties and also living quarters and no outdoor storage.
And also offered bills process.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bearstow?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. Ordinance one zero seven four is approved. Moving on to new business, item A, resolution two seventy six.
A resolution to the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement with C T I Engineers, Inc., to serve as the engineer of record for the city.
Okay, the city received six proposals, consultant evaluations made up of Kenny Custer, Amanda Dowers, Mike Allen, and I, Paul, and myself. And we narrowed that field from six down to three, per presentation from top three, uh, which been, which were C T I engineers, Walker Engineering, P D M Engineering. We ended up selecting C T I as position. We had an agreement attached to the back, a genuine memorandum. This is on a on-call engineering consulting services. Pretty well enumerated, uh, on first page. Assist the city on repaving, resurfacing, drainage concerns, functional engineer concerns out there in the field. I don't want to ask a call basis. The city does reserve the right to obtain quotes from other consulting engineers if the project is, uh, is in excess of over twenty-five thousand dollars. Engineer fee schedule is attached here to it. Contractors will appear to three years with two one-year extensions. So he wants to go so that it can be a total of five-year contract. We're coming off a contract with House Engineering, which was, I think, eight or nine years. Also, too, to point out, work order, all engineering services provided by the engineering industry shall be on a written work order basis agreed to improve by the city. So if, uh, we're not out there doing work without signing off on my, my office. That's the forty-four-year consideration for approval. We've got a handful of city engineering projects out there in the field that we've been moving ahead on.
And I know it's here, but contracts say we need eight thousand dollars per year?
Yes, sir. That says without crying or giving a justification from the city, if we go over that, that's fine.
So we're going to be using the double side, break down stormwater drainage, drainage sewers.
As long as, as long as the project cost is under twenty-five thousand, yes, sir. If the project cost is over twenty-five thousand, example, Ringo Road resurfacing or the city's resurfacing program, those programs are over twenty-five thousand. We can go with them or we have the opportunity to seek other proposals.
So then, the, uh, next thing we're going to be giving out, some of the thing in the park. So we're going to use these people down in the park to locate our sewers and do our sewer work.
We already have a contract. Are you talking about Kent Jordan?
Yes, sir.
We already have a contract with S seven eight.
Yes, indeed.
You approved that two months ago.
I was just reading the fact that this like, we're, we play the civil engineers and stuff that we were supposed to play for or something. So we're going to still be using these people to step in to do your work.
All the small stuff will be done by these people, yes. The larger stuff will be going out, kind of like our bidding procedures now.
Okay, where are the other questions? Also, I did find it interesting, Mr. Miller, in your memo, that C T I also provides general engineering services from Tuscany County, Fort Ojo, Chickamauga, Walker County, Hamilton County, W W T A, Ringo, Brookbridge, Tennessee, Cookville, and Jasper.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Did, we had, we knocked out a motion, I thought we had a motion, I'm sorry. A motion approved. Do we do have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have, can you comment to us? I have an article in it. Now, roll call, please.
Ms. Bearstow?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. Item B, resolution two seventy seven.
Resolution, city council, city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement, the architect design group for planning architecture services with regard to the restaurant facilities and possession stands at Kent Jordan Park.
Motion to approve, not exceeding sixty-five thousand, not under forty-five dollars.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. We have a second, do we have any questions?
I do, just, I just got some questions about the bathroom. Not like I wait to talk to you about that every week, I don't.
Okay, okay. We did put that one bathroom down where you had.
Yes, sir. We're, we're down on the lap.
Right, well, we had to keep it, we had to bring it up higher than where originally we were, what is too low.
I'd like to talk to you about the one, number one and number five, I said, yeah, number five.
Number?
Number one, you've got.
In number one? Yes, that's the new one.
Yes, sir, with the commercial kitchen and everything in it. They're dead in the middle of the flood zone, so I'd like to try to move it up on top of that field where it's never in. That's the main road, one right now that we're before big place called, they called it.
Okay, you know better than I do. You've seen it. I haven't.
Yes, sir. I'd like to see if we could put all that commercial kitchen and everything for about that hill up there. Because one time we had a possession stand, it had started for storage.
Okay.
Probably renovate that.
All right.
I'll bring you some pictures, I'll get some.
I've got some pictures of, of, I just don't have the, I think you gave me some pictures from 2013? I think it was. I've seen pictures of the flight. I just wasn't sure that it was, I thought it was further out towards entrance way into the.
I've seen the water going up to here.
Okay, okay. What was the other one? You had one and a.
You know, kind of switch one and five, put a bathroom, uh, there. And the number four is kind of off standardish, you know, burn more around, but feel a third pain and feel vibe in there. Cause of the fence between, uh, where they got bathroom going up to the back lot, had to come in in the parking lot. You go back up according to this bathroom fold on this mound.
Okay. Roll the tape.
Number five is one thing to have all the commercial kitchen.
I'm satisfied, number five.
The green number one up there.
Oh.
From the field up there.
Okay, that's the existing.
That says refurbished existing.
Right, okay, that's, that's, that's the old ones in the area. Yeah, okay. I see what you're saying. Switch, switch the green triangle with the blue.
Blue triangle, one, one, yeah.
The one. Okay. We get better.
Are there any other questions or comments? We can have the roll call, please. We did hear a motion that time. Did we not? Yes, okay. I'm really stupid.
Ms. Mayor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. Resolution 2787 is approved. Item C, the Grant Consent Agenda, which includes Resolution 2788 and Resolution 2789.
A resolution to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for acceptance of the Firehouse Subs Fiscal Year 2018 grant for the East Ridge Fire Department. And 2789 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the application for acceptance of the Better World Books Literacy Grants for libraries fiscal year 2018.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Senator.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Yes. The Grant Consent Agenda is approved. I do want to switch Items D and E to go ahead and consider Coach Day's request to waive the fees for East Ridge High School football field on June 8th.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. We can have the roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor Stoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. That item is approved. Leads us with our final item of the nine, which is presentation of the fiscal year 2018, 2019 vote.
Need to get set up here in a couple minutes. Bring them up on the overheads. What I want to do is give you a brief first highlights of the proposed annual budget for FY 1819. That's for fiscal year starting July 1st, 2018, June 30th, 2019. Millage rate remains the same at 381. No proposed increase in property tax rate. If you recall, last year, we went down to 1.4227 due to reassessments of the city, it turned down to 1.381. So in essence, we've been at the same tax rate, remember the neutral as far as property taxes for the past seven years. Does not draw upon the fund balance at all. Fund balance is healthy. It is at a projected balance of 5.16 million. Four million, if you recall, in 2017, we increased that from two to four. For catastrophic events that the city may incur, like what happened up there last year, uh, which was in the city, at a tornado. The general fund budget is balanced at $13,667.059. Projected income matching anticipated revenues. Proposed no rate or fee increases. Proposed in addition to five full-time positions and one type, one part-time position. Proposed vehicle and equipment replacements in the general fund act. Capital outlay totaling to $435,000, $342,000. Next page. This budget message is, uh, will be on the webpage tomorrow. Uh, we also have copies of the budget going in the library, several in City Hall, if the residents want to come in to take a look at it. Summary of the 1819 proposed budget totals $13,667.059. Property taxes generated $5.47 million. And the intergovernmental revenues and sales tax included in there at 2.66. When you add those two together, property taxes, sales tax, that generates about $10,500,000, which basically comes to 77% of the general fund revenue stream coming into that budget. What that basically tells you is a lot of money that comes into the City of East Ridge is going to be tied directly to how the economy works out there. And we see a decrease in the sales tax, we can see a decrease in the revenue stream coming in on the sales tax. We've seen areas of residential areas that are more down in value because of effective property tax. So we see property taxes go down. So, uh, that's something that we. At the present time, properties values in the city are growing, showing positive. I know in my neighborhood alone, off of, uh, Fallow and Sweet Fire and Marlboro area, those houses go on the market. They're sold in 30 days, within 30 days. It's unbelievable. I see some of these houses, the nice, before long, they've got a sole sign on it. Sales tax, last fiscal, this fiscal year, we're coming out of 2017 to 2018. That one showed about a six, five to six percent increase. Sales taxes are going down. We're only looking at increases probably in the next year, two to three percent increases in sales tax. So we've adjusted those figures accordingly. Next page. Talk, we're looking at the expenditures, personnel services, I have $13,667.059. And out of 9.394 million, represents about 68% of our general fund budget goes to employees, salaries, and fringe benefits. Reason why governments are that way, because we provide service. We do not build or manufacture widgets. So a lot of our revenue coming in goes to personnel services. We'll go down to the middle page. Can you scroll down there? Okay. Thank you. This year, we, over the past years, we've been operating out of the nine separate funds. A new fund we added this year called the Economic Development Fund. That is to account for the activity in the border region, redevelopment district, sales tax dollars. Each one of these funds have a specific reason why they are, uh, set aside from the general operating fund, be accounted for dollars that come in and dollars going out. Scroll down. If we add all of the funds together, the general operating fund, which is dominantly all services that we provide, police, fire, building and zoning, streets, everything except sanitation, they're accounted for in the general operating fund. State Street, state fund, the grant fund, the drug investigative fund, the economic development fund, which I just touched on, solid waste manage, management fund, which deals with our, uh, waste management, our refuse collection services throughout the city, the debt service fund, and the capital improvement program fund. We'll touch on those as we get further into the stock. Totally the general, all funds included in general and all the special funds that I believe in two, total of $24,903,824. So scroll down to, uh, property taxes. Thank you. Yep, that's fine. Okay, we're, as, as mentioned, we're proposing a unit rate of 1.3381. This is the same rate that we started running over the past fiscal year. When we computed out the assessed valuation was, we went to the Hamilton County, had, had enumerated to the city in February 2018, converted that over to assessed value, so our current assessed value, $379,641.656. We add to this valuation a couple of major developments that are going to fully come online this year. Those include Dunkin' Donuts Firehouse Subs, Marcos Pizza, Chick-fil-A, Hampton Inn, King, King Night. Those ones are under construction now and it will be added to our tax base. So we'll be generating both property taxes as well as sales taxes and on Hampton Inn hotel motel tax. Just to mention when I mentioned the Hampton Inn, they generate hotel motel tax at the same rate that the Hampton, that the, uh, Marriott, Bearfield Inn Suites generates, we're looking at about $75,000 a year coming out of hotel motel tax. We add these, these, these additional developments, so we're looking at increase in our assessed value about 1%, close to 1% or minimum of $3 million added to assessed value, taking it from $379 million to $382 million. So we're showing growth in the city. We want to continue this growth because it adds both to our tax base and it also adds to our sales tax. So kind of in a, in a brief analysis here, general fund, looking at our assessed valuation, $382,648,496 times our millage rate, a potential rate of 5.120 million. We don't have it quite 100%, 98% is usually what we go with, so that's going to generate a little over $5 million in property taxes for the year. For the upcoming year, 1819. Next page. Okay, the local Watson sales tax and state sales tax are anticipated to yield an estimated plus $56,000 on the local option, $386,342 on the state sales tax. Uh, this could be an increase in retail sales throughout the city as well as the new construction that we're adding, that we just noted. Other projected revenues are expected to remain relatively the same except in the year following areas. Code enforcement fees will be an increase of $4,000 due to an increase in code enforcement activities. We are looking at the addition of a code enforcement officer to our staff as part of our proposed increases to our personnel. Rentals for the East Ridge High School complex, uh, will have a revenue rate. I'm projecting these low because I don't want to protect them high and not be able to obtain that. So these are very conservative figures that, uh, that I'm presenting before the council. Matter of fact, most of the revenues that we're projecting are on conservative side. Uh, outdoor soccer, we'll see a major increase there, $9,000 due to greater participation in league play. We also see that same $7,000 for basketball. In arena, we're looking at an increase of $8,000 due to the anticipated increase in rental of the facility for special events, particularly since we have, uh, now brought forth, uh, the ability to have sale consumption beer permitted to improve special permit. Uh, we've had about five or six, uh, uh, special events venues that are looking to come in, that weren't there before, that would add to arena rental income. Municipal court fines and codes, we're looking at an increase of $10,000 due to the increase of the infractions violations bought about by established with the traffic unit. Two member traffic unit that's fully operational now that are out there, uh, doing a great job. Building permits, this is where we see the increase of $25,000. When I came here two years ago, saw a lot of activity over there off of Frowley Road with 100 units, single-family home under construction as well as 40. I can't really tell you what's going on here, but they're stocked entirely. I have no idea when they're going to rev up again. So we had anticipated all this revenue coming in for all these houses and townhouses, it didn't materialize. So I just can't even think what that same amount of dollars coming in when I know it's just not going to come. So we reduced that $25,000 to reflect that. Okay, if, if somebody goes in there and starts developing houses and the townhouses and that, then that's just additional revenue we have coming in. And the state income tax, we look at a decrease of $25,000 due to the continued reduction in the hall income tax distribution to Tennessee cities. This is based on the state legislature's action that they took four or five years ago to eventually, uh, eliminate altogether the hall income tax distribution to cities. So that's, takes care of the revenue side. Let's take a look at the proposed expenditure side. Before we get into that, I want to talk about the general fund balance. General fund unassigned fund balance for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, totaled $5.4 million. General fund anticipates deficit this year of $240,000 at the end of June. Therefore, the unassigned fund balance will go down to 5.166. Primary reason for this deficit is that funds were appropriated for the unassigned fund balance during the fiscal year, sanctioned by the city council to compensate for items not budgeted. Example, the engineering design services for the drainage street state project on Rainbow Road, South Seminole to Winterway Penguin. Those funds will be eventually reimbursed from the border region back to the general fund. And then the resurfacing of the two mile trail at Camp Jordan Park, which was with, uh, Tensley asphalt. Just for verification here, residents know that based on our city's fund balance policy, the city maintains a minimum fund balance in the general fund. The amount of approvals is not less than four months of general operating. General operating for one month is approximately $1 million. So, uh, our policy has set, uh, minimum $4 million, up to $4 million deep in our fund balance. We are over $5 million, so we're sitting in great shape. Expenditure side, the personnel costs, talked about 68% of the total general operating fund, $13 million, goes to employee salaries and benefits. Total personnel count for the overall budget program is looking at 139 full-time positions, 29 part-time positions. These would be five additional full-time positions over this current fiscal year and one part-time position. Those are explained as follows, in personnel, three firefighter positions are proposed with fire departments who we are going to attain two two-man engine companies. We can run out of station one, which will be two and two, two firefighters per engine and two for rescue. And then out of station two, two per engine. That will give us minimum six that we need. We're also looking at one IT. Did I say that right, Mike? Chief Mike?
He's seven for shift.
Seven for shift, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about firefighters. You still have the supervisor. Uh, we have one IT person. We have one IT person proposed to handle the updates and provide assistance to departments pertaining to the overall computer system, leaving it as an outside service. We want to get next, this upcoming fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, to lean ourselves off of that contract services and rely more on the full-time service. Code enforcement officer position to audit and code inspections and enforcement throughout the city, there's a total of five full-time and then one part-time recreational position to provide assistance in recreation programs and activities for our proposed expansion of these programs. Salaries, we're looking at proposing a cost of living adjustment at a form of three percent across the board increase in salary for all employees. We've seen an increase in overtime predominantly in the police department due to change in the overtime policy and paying police officers. In education and training, we've seen an increase appropriation of twenty-four thousand in most departments, primarily the police department due to a significant increase in police officers participating in the city's employee education assistance program, which I think is great that they take themselves for hours to get degrees in their criminal justice and related fields. On the operating expenses side, several of the major increases and decreases in this area are seen in uniforms and clothing. This is all departments, increased appropriation of eleven thousand, nine twenty-two. The election expense, we had the six thousand dollars in America's view of election in November of two thousand and eighteen, we need to account for this year, we can have an election, so that's something we need to put in. We see slight increase in appropriation to eleven thousand, one eighty-two, the increase in annual premium. Yields, slight increase in appropriation of over ten thousand. Electricity, increased appropriation of fourteen thousand, eight eighty-three, due predominantly to adding Eastbridge High School fields and facilities to our equity account. Water, substantial increase in appropriation of twenty-six thousand, four seventy-one, again, due to adding Eastbridge High School fields and facilities to the city's account, and then slight increase in the water costs and usage. Computer IT, slight increase in appropriation of seventeen thousand due to completion of upgrades in the computers that the city has been involved with and have completed over the past fiscal year. Legal fees, we see a decrease in appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars due to reduction used to the IDP board attorney for store services rendered in development agreements. Operating supplies, fire department, significant reduction, about thirty thousand dollars plus because we had to, we had to, when we completed fire station number two several months ago at the beginning of the year, we had to put equipment supplies in there, that cost about thirty thousand, up to thirty thousand, we spent all that, but that's out this year. That was for the furnishes for fire station number two, now this operational, that goes away. Contract services, a decrease in the appropriation of nineteen thousand, two dollars, primarily through the elimination of professional services that we had earmarked, with housing redevelopment authority, since that is now dissolved, those costs now do not need to be appropriated next year at all. Transportation assistance, we saw a reduction in this from thirty thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars due to membership. When we first entered this program, we were looking at approximately thirty thousand dollars, it was a benchmark, it was the fee, and we really had no idea what the participation was going to be. Well, it hasn't materialized and we've done the best we can, so I think we can reduce that fifteen thousand. That takes care of the operating expenses. As far as the capital outlay for equipment and vehicles, we are proposing following. In the municipal park, we're looking at a prison transport van, replacement of that. Police department, we're looking at three replacement police pursuit vehicles and four CID replacement vehicles, for a total of seven. We also have our first year of a five-year payment that we approved at the last city council meeting regarding body cameras in a total of one-hundred-and-thousand dollars. This is paid over five-year periods, so this first payment will be due in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Fire department, we're looking at a new rescue boat, hose, various sizes, and then one fire monitor for one, for one station, then next year we'll go for the monitor for seven. Ability to plan in zoning, we're looking at three replacement vehicles there. Street department, we're looking at a street concrete saw, so we go out there and start filling potholes, we can actually use a concrete saw the way we should, cut those areas out to resurface it and make it look a lot nicer and a lot neater, show asphalt down, pounding it in. Animal services, we're looking at one replacement van. General recreation, we're looking at one replacement park skater and a pickup truck, a new pickup truck, that's going to be a used vehicle. And then Eastbridge High School, we left twenty-five thousand dollars in there, we serviced tennis courts over there, we're hoping, we're working on a grant at present time, hopefully that we can match that fifty-fifty, that gives fifty thousand dollars for the tennis court facility down there at Eastbridge High School. We'd be able to do the courts and also the fence. If I go ahead and spend twenty-five thousand dollars for servicing the courts, I won't get the fence prepared, so I'm seeing if I can't get that grant, leverage that twenty-five thousand to make it fifty, so I can make the whole facility look nicer. Debt service, we're looking at final payment for the acquisition of fire pump, fire pumper, this is the final payment. And then the street department, remember when we bought the new street sweeper, we took that out over a period of seven years, since the life expectancy of street sweeper is fifteen. Transfers to other departments, these are fairly well talked about, this is going here, one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for the fire department's capital improvement fund, financing of vehicles that we've done years ago. Transfer two-hundred-and-ten thousand from the grants account to the grant fund to provide regular resources for grant programs, that's the general fund's transfer contribution. And the transfer of one-hundred-and-nineteen, four ninety from other sources to the debt service to provide revenues and pay the city's annual debt on the bond anticipation that we took out about three, four years ago?
Yes.
Three, four years ago. That takes care of the general operating fund. Just to touch on the, on the special funds, the first one we have is the state Street Eight Fund. This fund's established, all these special funds are established to account for the financial resources received and expended in regard to these funds. In state, Street Eight, resources that we've received from the state of Tennessee, state gas and motor fuel packs, and state transportation improvement program, TIP grants. You recall, the state increased the gas tax in two thousand and seventeen legislature, legislative session, four cents went into effect July first of two thousand and seventeen. A penny will go into effect, an additional penny will come on forward July first of two thousand and eighteen, and then we'll have another penny that will go on top of that July first of two thousand and nineteen for a total of six cents. We still remain below North Carolina, to the east, Georgia to the south, Virginia to the north, and I'm not so sure about Missouri. Fund balance at the end of two thousand and seventeen, eighteen was projected to be a little over a million dollars. Stat to the anticipated revenue that we proposed coming in in fiscal year eighteen and nineteen is six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars, that gives us one-point-six-six-seven million of that amount. We'll be, two-hundred thousand dollars goes to street lighting, under four thousand dollars goes to the city's batch on the TDOT transportation grant programs. We have several drainage projects low on South Seminole, and that would leave the balance at a minimum of six-hundred-and-forty-eight, four forty-one. We can also add the additional dollars that are in fund balance to at least take that up to eight-hundred to a million dollars in street resurfacing for this year. These funds, we'll say are restricted funds, they can only be used for public improvements as street reconstruction, street resurfacing, curbs, sidewalk drainage, nothing else. It can't be salaries, and it can't be rent raise programs. This has to be street programs, these dollars are earmarked as restricted funds.
Five a mile, it's about a million dollars, you know what, somebody tell us what that is?
A mile?
About a million dollars for a mile.
If it's a million dollars for a mile, I would, I would basically say that I'm not sure whether that's, are you talking about four lanes or are you talking about two lanes?
That may also include, that may be the road building cost.
That could mean a road building cost too. I mean, resurfacing is different than reconstruction. If you're building a new road, you're talking about going down dry subgrade, adding a base, then putting the wear insurance on it, that's a new road versus resurfacing the road, and then again, two lanes, the four lanes. So I've heard that thrown around, and my question is always asked, are you talking about a road like McBrian or Moore, or are you talking about Ringo?
State does regular, but it's like the, we're on the spot.
No, you're, yeah, you're correct.
I think the state would like to give us Ringo Road.
We don't want to take it from the state. That's major mistake, don't ever take anything from the state.
I wasn't suggesting.
You quote on that.
I wasn't suggesting.
I know, I know, I have been, I can't tell you how many times I've been burned, you know, the state used to love down in, down in Florida, they used to say, all of these grassy medians, we'll help you, give you all this money to beautify all these grassy medians, and then we'll turn them all over to use, so we don't have to maintain them. And then five years later, if you've taken them over, you've got people out there pulling weeds and everything else, very labor intensive, and the state walks around with a smile on their face saying, we just done mowed it down on you. I learned a hard way on that one, just let them take care of their roads. Grant fund, this is, this accounts for all the grants that are approved and received by the city. Fund balance for the end of fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen is projected to be seventy-nine thousand. If all of our grant applications come to fruition, that means every one of them we have comes to be approved, we're looking at an anticipated revenue of two-point-four million. We all know that we don't get a hundred percent, if we can get fifty percent, we're doing good, but you don't get anything if you don't put grant application in, so we're very active in doing that. So active, I will say that we have one multi-local grant, and two tap grants that actually put street skating, which would be their lights, curbing, drainage, and sidewalks on both sides for on Ringo Road from, from Wimberly Lane down to McBrian. That's three sections, but those are three grants that are very favorable to us, and we're going to continue that same program heading east, the next grant that I'm seeing Amanda, Amanda, you move, you just sit in the middle. She's working on now, have we submitted the one for Ringo Road from McBrian to Maxwell?
Yes, the next one will pass Maxwell, they're trying to have a better, uh, theme term line.
So we're actually taking, we're going further east over the next three, four, five years, and hopefully we'll be able to have all of that stretch of road completed all the way to I-75. That's, that's our overall plan. Major appropriations we have in the grants go to ADA retrofitting, CDPG light removal, homeland security for police and fire grants, city's match on TDOT alternative transportation and auto motor grants, that's one-point-one million, that's what we have set aside for our share. Safe routes to school grants for Eastbridge and Spring Creek Elementary Schools, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand is our man, and police traffic services. So if these all come to fruition, we have got to be able to show that we can match those dollars. We don't want to be able to get an approval from a grant set up, but we don't have the dollars appropriate, because when we put that grant application into the state or federal government, we're giving them assurances that we have that money budgeted in our budget, and absent that, we don't get approval. They want to make sure that we can meet our commitment on that grant, or they're going to give it to somebody else that settles that. That takes care of the grant fund. On the drug investigation fund, this is a special restrictive fund, established to account for and report financial resources, see federal state grants, example that being the Edward Byrne Grant, seizures, divorces in the court, Department of Justice, forfeitures, drug fines, and sale confiscated property. The end of this, the end of this fiscal year, we're projecting fund balance of thirty-eight thousand, add an anticipated revenue next year, we'll take that up to about eighty-three. This isn't a huge revenue stream, but it does assist the city. We utilize this to provide for special equipment, police department, which could be radios, tasers, rifles, things along that line, we're able to acquire. You cannot use drug investigation funds on salaries, that you can't do. So again, this is a restricted fund, it can only be used for specialized. Now we talk about the Economic Development Fund, this is the new one, keep it right up. Thank you. This was established to account for and report the financial activity in the border region redevelopment district. We're proposing in eighteen, nineteen that in total we will receive two billion, two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. That amount that will be deposited in the general fund, the amount of five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand will stay, and the balance of one million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, four twenty-nine will be transferred to the Economic Development Fund. Those dollars will be dispersed as others. We'll pay the financial incentives to businesses per the development agreements we have, we'll have a transfer to the debt service fund to pay the bonded and indebted to infrastructure projects, still a little over five-hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's for Camp Jordan Parkway widening and Street State and the exit one interchange reconfiguration project for those debt services for the next twenty years. When we say the border region redevelopment district dollar, what does that mean? It's any new development, or any development over and above the incremental that was there in two thousand and twelve, they pay seven cents is the state sales tax. These developments are in the nine-hundred-and-forty acres of our border region redevelopment district, the city gives its four-point-one-two-five cents back. That's what this two-point-two million dollars is, and that grows anywhere from two to five percent a year until the year two thousand and forty-two, and until all of our debt obligations and all of our financial commitments per development agreements are paid off, we will receive that money on an annual basis. Four-point-one-two-five cents on any new development that has retail sales within the border region and or enhanced development. An example of that is we, we all know what the firehouse subs and coffee shop replaced the old Long John Silver's. Long John Silver's was there in two thousand and twelve, sales taxes generated from the Long John Silver's is the base, so we only get four-point-one-two-five cents on the increment, that is the sales tax generated over and above what was generated in two thousand and twelve from Long John Silver's. Let's take over the love, so.
That is completely separate from the local option sales tax.
Yes, sir.
That we would get normally, and the property tax is what, so.
Exactly.
That is money that we wouldn't otherwise get if we didn't provide the incentive.
Exactly. This incentive was established back in two thousand and twelve by the state legislature. They wanted to have competitiveness, competitiveness with cities that were bordering states, i.e. we compete with Georgia, Crystal and Kingsport, and those cities compete with Virginia. So three cities put their applications in, this came about really quick, because the mayor was here for the whole. When the state, when the state department of revenues at that figured out how much tax dollars, that seven cents were coming into them, that they had to reimburse back to the cities because of increased enhanced sales, they had to give it back. They said, well, where was the money on this? So in two thousand and thirteen, they, they killed Bill, killed the program, but the three cities that had their applications already in, they aren't, so there are only three cities in the state of Tennessee that have this program, Crystal. So there are only three cities in the state of Tennessee that have this program, Crystal, Kingsport, and East Ridge. No one else.
And as it's turned out, it actually, the state is obviously having to give up three quarters of their share of the increased sales tax. But as I like to explain to people, it's, it's like if I had four quarters and I slid them across the table to you, and I asked for three of those quarters back, you still get to keep a quarter. And that's, that's the state's role in this, is they keep a quarter of the dollar that was generated by the increased sales tax. Obviously, we're the greater beneficiary of that, but the state still gets something, something's better than that.
Solid waste management fund, that fund is to account for the fees and expenses associated with garbage collection and disposal services. Balance that we project for next year will be three hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred six dollars as an audit income, and looking at the revenue stream coming in next year, one point five two three million. We certainly have enough to operate sanitation department. Personnel costs cost seven hundred fifty-five thousand, contractual operating expenses four hundred sixty-four thousand, general supplies a hundred and three. And in the capital outlay, we are requesting a replacement four-wheel drive pickup truck to be able to carry these twenty-pound, or I'm sorry, twenty cubic yard containers that we're going to acquire so we can start gaining all, getting pretty some dollars there in that business. Debt service fund, that's established to report the financial resources restricted or committed to expenditure of interest and principal on long-term general obligation debt. The hotel motel tax, we anticipate next year generating four hundred thousand dollars. Along with the interest income, the transfer from the general fund and the economic development fund that will provide revenues of a little over a million dollars. That debt service will pay the annual principal interest on our debt. Our series two thousand and four bond issued, which was two point seven million for Camp Jordan and Fire Hall, Tennessee Municipal League bond, series two thousand fifteen was one point six million for various projects. General obligation bond, series two thousand fifteen, three point eight five million for the line of Camp Jordan Parkway and the later next one project. Tennessee Municipal League capital note, series two thousand seventeen, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the street state, Camp Jordan, and Tennessee Municipal League general obligation bond, series two thousand seventeen, four point nine million for construction tax, one interchange reconfiguration project. Capital improvement program fund, moving to that one, that counts for and reports the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are either restricted or committed to expenditure for specific purposes, that being construction of upgrades and improvements at Camp Jordan Park, construction of a multi-use pavilion, and community development fifty-fifty grants program we have, what we refer to as our SOD program. On the next, that's all as far as my budget message is concerned. All of these are backed up in the next section of the budget into the costs breaking down on an object account basis. Backed up is organizational chart for the city of East Ridge. After that, the last tab we have, budget book is the East Ridge municipal debt, the outline of that budget. So that's the presentation of the budget. I'm here tonight to adopt it, don't be afraid to adopt it, once you've read it, digested, if you have any questions, I'm available to respond to. I welcome your input.
Okay. Thank you very much, but very thorough presentation. Obviously, the highlights, we're in good, in good financial shape. We've got, the general fund is, is healthy. No projected tax increase. That's good news. A lot of good news in this budget, so. And of course, we're adding, adding positions, adding the fire service. It's always a good thing. Thank you very much.
Say one thing.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank the citizens. The East Ridge Optimists Club, we've got members sitting out here on this planet, a fundraiser the other night for the heart of the family, it was tremendous, raised a lot of money in about two-hour period, and maybe he was there showing stuff, a video of what was going on, his life and cutting up, having a good time. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, kissing, playing, our beautiful people there for stuff. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just one more reminder, please do keep that, that entire family in approach. Thank you all for being here tonight. We will see you the next time. This meeting is adjourned.